Everyone, welcome to the March 22nd, 2021 Troy City Council Meeting. I will officially call the meeting to order and ask for City Clerk Dixon to call the roll call.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Mayor Protem Brooks?
Here.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Here.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
All present this evening. First up are certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have four of them, including some rule waivers this evening. I'm going to start with C1 before we head to the remaining. It's a proclamation for bicentennial of Greek Independence Day, March 25th, 2021, and I will read that into the record. Again, this is the proclamation for the bicentennial of Greek Independence Day celebration, March 25th, 2021. Whereas March 25th, 2021 marks the bicentennial of Greece's independence from the suppressing rule of the Ottoman Empire, for 400 years, the Greeks were not allowed to teach about their venerable heritage, practice religion, or even speak their native Greek language. And whereas when the Greek people had enough, they declared independence and fought a terrible and bloody war. No one was exempt. Men, women, and children were all needed to fight the outnumbering enemy. Finally, after eight-plus years of horrific fighting, on September 25th, 1829, the war ended with Greece being victorious. Greece, the birthplace of democracy, was once again a free country. And whereas the people of ancient Greece developed the concept of democracy in which supreme power, which the supreme power to govern is vested in the people. And whereas the city of Troy is home to close to 1,000 proud Greeks and the home of Saint Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church, where they celebrate Oprah Fest each June. And whereas the city of Troy has Greek roots in its name, the ancient city of Troy, existing over 4,000 years ago, was attacked and conquered by the Greeks after they gained access to the city by means of the Trojan Horse, as described in Homer's classic novel, The Iliad. It is an honor that the city of Troy is named after this epic Greek battle and that we can celebrate 2021 as Greece's bicentennial. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the city of Troy is hereby celebrate March 25th, 2021 as the bicentennial of Greek Independence Day in the city of Troy, and urges all citizens to join us in recognizing this day as we celebrate with our Greek neighbors and friends on Greece gaining its independence. And be it further resolved, the City Council urges all residents to commemorate the bicentennial of Greek Independence Day and expresses support for the principles of democratic governance to which the people of Greece are committed, and commends the Greek-American community for its contributions to the United States and its role as the bridge between the two countries, presented this 22nd day of March, 2021. Next on the agenda, we have a vote on resolution, a resolution to waive the rules of procedure for the City Council, Rule Number 5A, regular meeting agendas, and Rule Number 8, proclamations and congratulatory certificates as submitted as a late submittal. I will move that resolution as printed in the late submittal agenda packet.
Support, support.
It's moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Hoderick, that we approve the resolution to vote on, to waive the rules and procedure for the City Council, Rule Number 5A, regular meeting agendas, and Rule Number 8, proclamations and congratulatory certificates as printed as the late submittal in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote is Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion carries. First up, we have C2, a proclamation for colorectal cancer awareness month, March 2021. I will read that into the record. Whereas colorectal cancer is, is disease that starts in the lower portion of one's digestive system, according to the American Cancer Society, approximately one in 23 men and one in 25 women will develop this cancer at some point in their lives. And whereas colorectal cancer, cancer doesn't only impact those who live with it, the disease also has ripple effects on their loved ones and communities. And whereas each year colorectal cancer claims more than 50,000 American lives, making it the second-leading cause of cancer deaths in our nation. National Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month is a chance to bring greater attention to this terrible disease and to offer what families living through it need most, hope. And whereas in this battle, hope and awareness are intertwined. Because the risk of death from colorectal cancer drops dramatically when the cancer is caught early, lives can be saved by calling attention to risk factors and increasing routine screening. This month is our chance to improve public understanding of colorectal cancer risk, inform people about screening recommendations, and set our sights on broadening prevention strategies, improving treatments, and finding a cure. And whereas, as with so many diseases, the best defense against colorectal cancer is early detection. Symptoms can include blood in the stool, stomach pain, aches, or cramps that do not go away, and weight loss without an unknown, without a known cause. But many cases have no symptoms at all, especially early in the disease, when colorectal cancer is most curable. A recent government study estimated that if all 50-year-old adults were screened for colorectal cancer, approximately 35,000 deaths could be prevented. And whereas, that is why it is so crucial, especially for Americans over 50 or otherwise at increased risk, to receive regular screenings. And although the disease is relatively rare in younger adults, the incidence of colorectal cancer has been rising among this group. No matter your age, every American should take possible colorectal cancer symptoms seriously and bring them to the attention of a healthcare provider. And whereas this year, the Colorectal Cancer Alliance's Dress in Blue Day was March 5th, the organization encouraged everyone to wear blue clothing or a blue ribbon to raise awareness of the disease and honor those who have been affected by it. The city of Troy will illuminate city halls outside lights blue during the remaining part of the month of March 2021, representing colorectal cancer awareness month. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Troy hereby proclaims March 2021 as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Troy, and joins with all citizens, government agencies, hospitals, private businesses, nonprofit organizations, and other groups to participate in activities that will increase awareness and prevention of colorectal cancer. And be it further resolved that the city of Troy honors the memory of Troy resident Jamie Sandelson, husband of Christie McDonald, and devoted father to Caroline, Josh, and Catherine. Jamie's life was cut short at the age of 48 due to colorectal cancer on August 1st, 2020. This family encourages everyone to hear Jamie's lasting message of the importance of colonoscopies starting at the age of 40. And be it further resolved that the city of Troy will in fact illuminate city halls outside lights blue during the month of March 2021, representing colorectal cancer awareness month, as is presented this 22nd day of March, 2021. Next up is C3, a proclamation for Education and Sharing Day USA, Wednesday, March 24th, 2021. And I'll read that into the record as well. Whereas a quality education is one of the significant foundations for the continuing success of our state, our country, and our society at large. And in the city of Troy, we strive for the betterment of all our citizens through an increased focus on education and sharing. And whereas through providing the possibility of an excellent education for all, especially children, with which to gain knowledge through rigorous study, we can create hope for a brighter, kinder, and more united and prosperous future in the lives of so many. And whereas one of the leading global advocates for the advancement of education, the Lubavitcher Rebbe, Rabbi Manachem Schneerson, of righteous memory, stressed the importance of moral and ethical education as the bedrock of humanity and the hallmark of a healthy society, and strongly urged that education be reinforced by the inculcation of strong moral values. And whereas, in recognition of the Rebbe's outstanding and lasting contributions toward improvements in world education, morality, and acts of charity, he was awarded the Congressional Gold Medal, and the United States Congress has established his birthday as a national day to raise awareness and strengthen the education of our children. And whereas for more than 40 years, the President of the United States has recognized and honored the Rebbe's vision each year on that day by proclaiming it Education and Sharing Day USA. And whereas we presently battle a global pandemic, which has disrupted traditional models of education across our nation, while concurrently motivating a focus on the stronger core values we wish to impart to children and adults beyond academic achievement. And whereas we can nurture the unity of diverse peoples through encouraging increased acts of goodness and kindness imbued with awareness that even a single positive act of an individual can make a major impact in this world. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Troy City Council proclaims, uh, proclaims Wednesday, March 24th, 2021, as Education and Sharing Day in the city of Troy. And call upon government officials, educators, volunteers, and citizens to reach out to those within our communities and work to make and create a better, brighter, and more hopeful future for all. And be it further resolved that the Troy City Council encourages all residents to raise awareness about the importance of education in our lives, and pay special tribute to the family members, educators, mentors, clergy members, and other community leaders who invest in the lives of our nation's youth through education and fostering kindness and caring for one another. This is presented this 22nd day of March, 2021. Next on the agenda is C4, a proclamation, standing in solidarity with Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders to denounce racism and hate crimes. Whereas the city of Troy is one of the most diverse communities in the state of Michigan, with over 80 languages spoken in homes across its neighborhoods and businesses, and over 20%, 27% of its residents of Asian descent. And whereas the City Council embraces this diversity and has created a Global Troy Advisory Committee, and has recently had a joint meeting with this community exploring ways to enrich and protect our community. And whereas the City Council has been advised that the Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders, AAPI, community, has experienced a substantial increase in reported hate crimes, xenophobic rhetoric, and hateful acts across the nation and in Michigan during this past year, according to the Michigan Department of Civil Rights, and many other instances are unreported due to fear and stigmatization. And whereas in the same week we enjoyed the news of 2001 Troy High School graduate Steven Yun, being the first Asian-American nominated in the Best Actor category for an Academy Award, we experienced the shock of eight murders in Atlanta, which some have characterized as a hate crime. And whereas racism and xenophobia, along with all forms of hateful rhetoric, negatively impacts residents in Troy, and hence mars the safety, welfare, health, and social fabric of our entire community. And whereas the International Day for Elimination of Racial Discrimination is observed annually on March 21st, which this year came during a time of heightened vigilance. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Troy City Council considers now to be an important moment to reaffirm its commitment to its racial equity statement proclaimed on June 1st, 2020, standing in solidarity with all who suffer from racial injustice. And be it further resolved that Troy City Council condemns and denounces acts of racism, xenophobia, and intolerance against Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders and people of all races and backgrounds in the city, and strongly encourages all members of our community to work together to protect our neighbors by speaking up to help prevent racism, xenophobia, and intolerance, upholding the inherent and inviolable dignity and value of every single person in the city of Troy. This proclamation is presented this 22nd day of March, 2021. That concludes our proclamations and special presentations this evening. There are no carryover items this evening, no public hearings either, so we'll move on to public comment. The reminders, as we're meeting virtual, public comment is submitted via email to publiccomment@troymi.gov or via voicemail at 248-524-3302. I understand, City Clerk Dixon, that we have two voicemails this evening from either elected representatives of our community or from their staff that happened to be just over the three-minute mark, and I need to seek consensus from council to allow those full messages to be read into the record. Do I have consensus? Nodding heads and thumbs up. So, City Clerk Dixon, please take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. First email tonight is from Carol Gahl. I would like to comment on the proposed building of office buildings at the Crooks, at the Crooks in Long Lake. With so many empty building, so many empty buildings now, one block over on Corporate Drive, there are five for lease. This is not to, not the time to build more. We will become a city of empty office space, not to mention all of the other areas in Troy that are facing lost rental of office space. This is very short-sighted and will not do anything but add vast empty space that will not be rented. This is a shame, too, that the wildlife that used the woods will also be gone. Time for, for progress to slow down. We have enough empty buildings to fill up without adding five more. Next email is from Harold Delu. I posted this sentence in Nextdoor Gardening Group this morning. It is time to rise beyond yourself, beyond your family, beyond your tribe, beyond your race, beyond your country, and join the world human family. Next comment is from Joe Pollak. Please do not build a paved bike path along the creek in JCPark. Due to all of the recent home building on the north side of the creek, there just aren't many trees left. I understand there will be a web portal to submit feedback starting next week, and I will provide a more elaborate comment at the time. And we have two voicemails.
Hi there, uh, this is Elizabeth from State Senator Mallard McFarrows' office, filling in for her today while she's out on family leave. I wanted to come in and give a brief update and a few things that are happening within the state and local level that we are aware of. Um, the first being today is the, um, day that all Michiganders aged 50 and up are eligible for vaccines, as well as Michiganders who are 16 years older with certain pre-existing conditions. Ford Fields is now open seven days a week from 8 to 8:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the next eight weeks. Registration is now open for that as well, uh, through Meyer Clinic, and they are starting for 6,000 doses a day in arms. And also the Pontiac Sockit Complex, uh, Oakland County has partnered up with Ned Wholesale Mortgage to use it as a vaccination site and are striving for 5,000 shots a day. So those are, setting new plans to help those to get vaccinated. From the state, the COVID supplemental bill, um, two weeks ago, the Michigan Legislature passed a 4.2 billion code release bill that included funding from the state as well as the federal funding provided to Michigan, um, uh, from Congress back in December. Governor Whitmer signed the pair of bills, the supplemental bills, um, but vetoed two of the bills that were tie bars to that funding that would have stripped MDHHS and local school districts of their authority to combat this pandemic. The House and Senate have since voted on sending back the 652 million previously, uh, vetoed by Governor Whitmer, back to her. This was last week, at the end of the week. So they've been sent to her, but there has been no action since from the, um, administration, possibly in the next coming days, and we will work to update, um, as we see movement. From our office, we've been able to, um, introduce some legislation as Senator Ms. Morrow is out on family leave, uh, one being last week, uh, we, we partnered with Senator Irwin to introduce a two-bill package that would establish Indigenous Peoples' Day as a state holiday in Michigan, as well as Election Day as a state holiday. We also had a bill within the Hardworking Michiganders Recovery Plan, um, a, a bill package to increase unemployment benefits. Our specifically had to do with, um, modifying and the standards and determining, um, uh, certain, uh, determining, um, certain eligible, uh, requirements for, um, unemployment for independent contractors. Also, I know that we sent an email out, uh, towards the end of, two weeks ago or last week, about the Virtual Meetings Act, Open Meetings Act, uh, allowing for virtual meetings. This is something that the legislature needs to re-opt since last year. And from what we have heard, uh, the Senate Republicans are open to an OMA extension, but they have not committed unless the House majority would be open to it. From, from what we are seeing and hearing, that is, uh, hard no from, from their end. So, um, this is something that we, we believe there's a larger conversation around extending this and, and opening it, not within just the pandemic, but for allowance outside of it as well. So, um, the more we, we learn and we find out, we will make sure to update you guys. But this is the update that we have so far. So that was pretty quick of me, but if anyone has any questions or any clarification needed, please send it to our email at senate@mccmarrow@senet.michigan.gov, and, uh, we will get back with you. All right, thank you, bye-bye.
Hello, this is State Representative Padma Kuppa. I represent House District 41, which includes the city of Troy and the city of Plowton. As a quick legislative update, I wanted to let you know that the bills that provide for procedures for electronic meetings of public bodies have been introduced by a bipartisan group of legislators, including Senate Bill 207, but these bills have halted at the committee stage. The House Bills, um, 4286 and 4371 have both been referred to the Local Government and Municipal Finance Committee that I sit on, but we have yet to see them on the committee agenda, and we are not meeting this week for the committee. Um, in fact, the committee hasn't met for a number of weeks, and we are not set to convene before the legislature takes a break beginning next week. If you are an HD41 resident and would like to get in touch with me, the best way to reach my office is by email at padmakuppa, P-A-D-M-A-K-U-P-P-A, at house.mi.gov, and by phone at 517-373-1783. My staff frequently work remotely, so if you are connecting to contacting us by phone, please be sure to leave a voicemail, and a member of my staff will get back to you. When leaving a voicemail or email, please be sure to leave your full name, your phone number, and home address so that we can easily verify that you are a constituent, document your current fundings, and contact you as necessary. I will be holding a virtual coffee hour this Friday, March 26th, at 6:00 p.m. via Facebook Live to discuss community issues with constituents. I do so every two weeks. You can see all of those videos on Facebook. Even if you don't have a Facebook account, you can look it up and you will be able to see the videos. I will also be speaking tonight at 6:00 p.m. on a panel to reflect on recent Asian, anti-Asian violence and hate crimes. Please visit my social media platforms for additional information. The panel tonight is being organized by APIA Vote and Michigan, Chapter of Michigan, uh, and you can find all this information on social media, @padmakuppaM41 on Twitter, and @myMIREpPadmaKuppa on Facebook. If you are looking for further information, um, and you want to file an unemployment claim or are looking on any legislation that I've introduced, you can visit my website, kuppa.housecamps.com for, for other upcoming events. One last thing, we did have a hearing, um, to, uh, hear, um, testimony on House Bills 4159 and 4160, which would close the loophole in the law and provide justice for Ali, a vulnerable adult with Down Syndrome, who was a victim of an online sexual predator, and for many others across our state like her. The bill received its hearing, but further testimony and a vote is still pending, um, and that happened last week on, on Tuesday. Thank you very much, and I hope to see you at my next Facebook. Bye.
That is all the public comment tonight.
Thank you. That concludes those that have participated in our virtual public comment this evening. And that's an opportunity for City Council or City Administration to reply. Anyone on council or city management like to respond this evening? I will just, uh, thank those who sent their emails in, certainly to Carol Gahl, as the Long Lake and Crooks development is in early phases, um, and I, there's some, it's going to be planning commission first, and if it comes to council, we'll certainly take all its own advisement, um, in the future. And, um, yeah, Mr. Pollak, regarding the, the trails of pathway, like, it sounds like he knows how to submit that information to the portal that's being opened up for the city. And to Senator McFarrows' office and State Representative Padma Kuppa, thank you for your updates, um, and for the information provided. Based on what I'm hearing from both of you, I, I fully expect that we'll be meeting in person at our April meeting, um, and we'll be directly there as a city, if that's the way things go, so. Okay, that concludes public comment. Unless anyone else had any other response or reply. Didn't look, didn't look like anybody was jumping up and down. All right, we move on to regular business. First up on the agenda is I1 Board and Committee Appointments. First are mayoral appointments. I have one this evening. I'll move, resolve that the mayor of the city of Troy hereby appoints the following nominated person to serve on the boards and committees as indicated, uh, to the Downtown Development Authority, David Stone, for the term expiring, uh, September 30th, 2023.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Hamilton, that the mayor of the city of Troy appoints David Stone to the Downtown Development Authority for the term expiring September 30th, 2023. Any discussion? The vote is Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Motion carries. That concludes Board and Committee Appointments, uh, mayoral appointments this evening. There are no City Council Appointments this evening, so next up is I2 Board and Committee Nominations. Uh, I don't have any mayoral nominations this evening. Mayor Protem Brooks, do you have any City Council nominations?
No.
That makes it easy to conclude I2. So next up, I3, there's no request for closed session this evening. I4 is a lease agreement for Camp Tycondoroga Restaurant Operations, and this will be introduced and presented by Interim Recreation Director Brian Ghul, as I understand. I haven't seen Brian in a while, so I'm looking forward to his face popping up on the screen. Maybe.
Mayor, this is, uh...
Hello. Hey, Brian. Hey, Brian.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you recommends approval of a lease agreement between the city of Troy and Gallatin, Inc., also known as Camp Tycondoroga, uh, for restaurant operations at the Sylvan Glen Golf Course. Uh, the current agreement ends on May 1st of this year. The new lease agreement would be for a five-year period with an option to renew for one additional five-year period. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Brian. Good to see you. Good to see you. Any questions from council? Questions from council? I know we had some earlier questions. Thank you for that, so looks like, uh, no additional questions, Brian. Is there anyone like to move the resolution? Councilmember Eric Sangal, did you want to move this resolution?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just looking for my mute button. I'd like to move I4, lease agreement for Camp Tycondoroga Restaurant Operations as printed in the agenda.
Support, support.
Moved by Councilmember Eric Sangal, supported by Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga, that we approve I4, lease agreement for Camp Tycondoroga Restaurant Operations as, uh, printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? All right, the vote is Dixon. Next up on the agenda is I5, it's a bid waiver SIP service for the city's new telephone system, and this will be introduced by Gert Pereskevin, our Information Technology Director. Hi, Gert.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is a bid waiver to allow the city to continue to utilize the company Telnet Worldwide to provide telephone service to our internal telephone system. We've used Telnet since 2011 and have renewed their service several times. As part of the new telephone system, we are proposing on the, on this agenda, we plan to move to a SIP service rather than the traditional PRI we've used in the past. PRI rates are going up and are being phased out. So Telnet submitted a proposal and then a market survey was completed to confirm they were competitive and a good value for the city. The city's been happy with Telnet's service and responsiveness, and staying with the same vendor will also help contribute to a smoother transition from one service and system to the other. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Gert. Any questions from council? My only question is, you're the IT extraordinaire, Gert, does this, does this do it for you? Is this good?
This is great.
All I needed to hear. All right. I'd like to move the resolution. Councilmember Hoderick?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move I5, bid waiver SIP service for the city's new telephone system as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Move by Councilmember Hoderick, supported by Councilmember Erickson Galt, that we approve I5, bid waiver, SIP service for the city's new telephone system as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Erickson Galt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brooks?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Gert. Good to see you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is I6, Standard Purchasing Resolution 9, Approval to Expend Funds for Membership Dues and Renewals Over $10,000, the Michigan Municipal League, and that will be introduced by City Manager Mark Miller.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Before you this evening is the annual membership for the Michigan Municipal League, which we call MML. We do this about, we do this every year. The amount is $13,229. Besides the training opportunities and information, being a member of MMA also offers the ability to have insurance coverage through MMRNA, is it? And also other legal opinions to assist municipalities and the city of Troy in some of our cases. With that, this is pretty standard operating procedure.
Questions for Mark? Now hopefully not, because his audio is not great again tonight. We heard you, Mark, don't worry. But any questions? We're all pretty familiar with MML. Someone like to move the resolution? Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move I6, Standard Purchasing Resolution 9, Approval to Expend Funds for Membership Dues and Renewals Over $10,000, Michigan Municipal League, as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Move by Councilmember Hamilton, supported by Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga, that we approve I6, Standard Purchasing Resolution 9, Approval to Expend Funds for Membership Dues and Renewals Over $10,000, Michigan Municipal League. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Erickson Galt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Motion carries. That concludes regular business this evening. Next up is the consent agenda. Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent agenda this evening for separate consideration? Councilmember Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Support.
Move by Councilmember Abraham, supported by Councilmember Hoderick, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed. Support.
Move by Councilmember Abraham, supported by Councilmember Hoderick, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? Councilmember Hamilton?
I just wanted to do my monthly pointing out of interesting items in the consent agenda. I noticed that we're approving the tennis courts being resurfaced at Bowlin Park. Then we're also improving asphalt overlays, road improvements in Sections 2 and 3, which is north central and northeast Troy, on my social media and on cities. If you look at the agenda packet, you can see exactly which streets are going to get done over the next year, but it's good to see that.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. And I would argue that all items on the consent agenda are interesting, not just the ones that get pointed out. They're important to somebody. That's the whole point. I appreciate that. Any other discussion? All right, the vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Erickson Galt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
That's it. Motion carries. Very good. All items on the consent agenda have been approved this evening. Next up is Memorandums and Future Council Agenda Items. We have one this evening, K1, Announcement of a Public Hearing, April 12th, 2021, is an announcement of a public hearing to reprogram Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, PY2018 Funds. So that will be at April 12th meeting. That concludes Memorandums and Future Council Agenda Items. We've handled public comment. There are no public, excuse me, no council referrals this evening, so we move on to the reports. Comments on the reports this evening? Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Thank you, Mayor. I just lost the number, but it's concerning the business survey. I just wanted to raise a number of questions and just thank you very much, Assistant City Manager Bruner, for putting that on there as a chance to look at it and for us to engage and provide some input. My initial reaction as I looked at it is, it would be wonderful, following our meeting we had, the joint meeting with the DDA, if we could also get some of their input and thinking if there is a way to somehow integrate some of those questions around concerns with office space that the DDA had or others, other of those, those kind of concerns. And we even heard a public comment kind of bringing that up today. So that's one question is, could we involve the DDA? Second thing was, in the opening section, when it asked those who were taking the survey, kind of how do they categorize themselves? I just would put a plug in that we have a category around our nonprofits who are very important members in our community, often providing very important services, and they don't tend to categorize themselves according to those other, other categories that are on there. And we do have some very well-known, of course, nonprofits and foundations in our, in our city. Other thing I was curious about is around, I know that typically a portion of these surveys are sent through the mail. And given that many of our businesses are still working from home, and right now the talk is MyOSHA is going to probably extend their guidance that businesses, if they can, would continue to work from home until October. So that also pushes out, I know, some workplaces in terms of when they, they return to work in the city. And so wondering, I know my own organization, we don't check mail. We've stopped doing that. Most of our mail is electronic, and if there is something special, we just go after that piece of mail, but we don't check mail. It's thrown away essentially. And I'm sure many businesses are doing that. So wondering what would be the strategy in terms of distribution, given that many places may not be back to work for quite some time.
Yeah, it's an interesting...
Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an interesting challenge, because with the resident survey, we had recent voters. And, you know, the clerk's office was able to provide a list, and 2,000 people were randomly selected to receive that. With the businesses, it's more difficult. We're still talking about what data source to use to select the 2,000 random sample survey recipients. But regardless of whether or not a business receives the, an invitation to take the survey in the mail or not, it'll, it'll be open for anybody to fill out the survey. The trouble with relying on an email list or, or, you know, anything else is, is that it's really a kind of a small, really a sliver of all the businesses located in Troy. So we're trying to balance the need, you know, for a random sample versus not using the mail. But I think at this point, using the mail is the only way to get that random sample, but we'll still be able to receive responses from, from others outside the sample group. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mark.
Your update, Council, on the actions on the resident survey we discussed?
Mark, you're scooping me. I met with William today.
Before, actually, before we go back on to the resident survey, can I just ask a couple follow-ups about the business survey? I'm sorry. But then I'll give you a chance, Bob, to take back that. But there's, in the memo, it doesn't really discuss timing of the business survey. Can you speak a little bit about the timing to that and if there is opportunity or need for us to weigh in any further, or is this our one shot?
Oh, it's a good question. So with the resident survey, you know, we put it on the regular agenda once or twice and talked about it. So with this survey, I thought, well, rather than schedule some time on the regular agenda, I'll put it in as a report and, and see what kind of feedback we get. If there's a lot of feedback, we can bring it back as a regular agenda item and discuss it more thoroughly. If there's not a lot of feedback, then we can, you know, take that input and, and tweak it. So if folks have reviewed what we have so far and think we're on the right track, you know, you can certainly send follow-up comments after the meeting, but we can go ahead and, you know, potentially have the survey finalized by the end of this week and start distribution within the next couple of weeks. So the, the timing just really depends on how much input council wants to provide, and that's really up to you.
Well, so I appreciate that, Bob. I only asked one more specifically to Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga's, maybe it was her first or second question regarding the DDA. I recognize the difficulty in getting input from the DDA, just, although I think they have a meeting next month, but it's difficult to put this on agenda and have that group discuss, and it's not necessarily the most productive and effective use of time. But as it relates to office space specifically and any thoughts or concerns, is there a possibility that you could at least run this by Chairman Kerlik and have a conversation with him just to seek some input initial? I think that might be a good idea, based on what Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga had brought up. Certainly, the DDA members have a, they play a large role in our, in our business environment here in the city. And I, sometimes I, I mean, nothing else, just to kind of have a sense check from Chairman Kerlik is, might satisfy some of that concern. Again, trying to convene the Downtown Development Authority to, to, to see how the sausage gets made might not be the best way to do it, recognizing it's just as bad when we try to do it here. But as we're, as I'm about to embark into, but I just, I think that might be a good, I don't know if compromise is the right word, but at least a, a phone call at least would be good with Allen, given that opportunity. And I, I have the survey up in front of me and I can't recall off the top of my head, does it address, do you intend to go back to your office suite? I mean, that kind of stuff, I can't remember. It's a little more broad, I think, or general on some of these questions.
It asks questions about what kinds of business spaces you use, whether people expect to use, you know, more or less or the same going forward. So there's some questions that, that touch on it. Nothing pandemic specific, such as, you know, are you working in person now or when do you expect to return, that sort of thing.
And I certainly think to Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga's comment, every time you talk about people going back to the offices with some far-out month, it gives me a little heart attack, Rebecca. So when I'm talking about MyOSHA pushing it back to October is, I, I jaw drops. But I do think a lot of small, small businesses especially are still checking their mail. It may not be the same as before, but I hope someone's checking Kresge mail. What if someone's writing checks and sending in paper checks? But I do think, I mean, I'm a small business owner in this city. I still check my mail, even though I'm working from home 95% of the time. So that's the nature. I think maybe if, there's more people checking mail than we realize, but as long as we know that it's also opened up to other businesses, and, you know, Glenn Lepin, obviously, I'm telling you stuff you already know, he's got, his Rolodex is so amazing of the businesses in this city. I'm sure we can have a very robust response rate, and you're all over that, I'm assuming. So, I don't know. Trying to address some of those things, but that's all I have on the business survey now. If anyone else has a... Mayor Pro Tem Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had, I had the same question, actually, about the timeline that you had. But another thought that I had, in addition to working with DDA, what about invoking the chamber as well to try to help reach out to some of the businesses, small businesses in the area and get, you know, maybe they can, they can help administer the survey as well?
I'm sure as a, as a proponent of members, they would help push that out for an online version if they were looking, I mean, I know they would. But that's a good point as well. I guess I assumed that we were doing that, all right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Brooks. Anything else on the business survey? Oh, Mayor, Council, Councilmember Hamilton?
This isn't on the business survey. I just wanted to mention the other report. If I...
Can we go, Bob, do you want to do the residential survey stuff before we go on to the report?
Yeah, I do that first. All right. Thought you were going to forget.
Nope.
I, I talked to Will this afternoon at 1:30. I have, I have seen the residential survey results. I, I think everybody's going to be excited when you see them at the first meeting in April. So we'll be...
Three weeks from now, Bob. Thanks for the three-week break before, let's talk about a cliffhanger. But go ahead.
It's a, it's a tease, but the good, the good news is, I, I mean, I could, I could talk all night about the, the survey results, but I, I think what, what you'll see is, we'll present the survey results on Monday, April 12th, and then City Manager will present his budget proposal on Monday, the 19th. And I think you'll, you'll see that the, the budget proposal is very much in line with what the survey results are, are telling us. And we didn't have the benefit of seeing the survey results first before we, we developed that budget, so it kind of makes us feel like we know what we're doing.
But you had great input from council who's been listening to our residents, right?
Absolutely.
There you go. There you go. Well, and we'll get cross tabs and everything like we did before with the survey on the school.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. That's exciting news. Councilmember Hamilton, you want to talk about the trails?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I was just going to talk about Report O02A about Troy Trails Phase 3 through JCPark and the community engagement. They, some early, some early phase testing of the area was done. They proposed a plan, it's posted in the agenda, there's a map of it, shows kind of where they want to see the trail go. They're engaging residents nearby and sent them all information. And they're also requesting feedback from Troy residents at rec.troymi.gov/trails. And on there, you can view information or you can access the citizen request portal and provide your feedback. But we're hoping to get this project on the way later this year if, if everyone is on board. And, and thank, thank you for the information.
Great.
I was just walking, I was just walking through that park a few days ago with Victoria and my wife, and we saw that the Renshaw drain is very big. It's almost, it's like a full river and, but it divides the whole park in half, and there's really no way across it. So to have a bridge there would be really nice to help get around there. So to have a bridge there would be really nice to help get around there.
Great. Thank you for that. And and just to if for those who haven't read the report or probably won't read the report, I they based on initial resident feedback, uh, Public Works Director Boganship has worked with um the design for to to move part of the trail further inward into the park, so it's even further away from the the neighboring property line. So just as a reminder, we do listen to the resident feedback when it comes to these trails. It's a very important part of the process, and you do, like Councilmember Hamilton just said, there is uh online opportunity now at rec dot Troy M I dot gov slash trails to put in your uh feedback and comments. And I know that uh they'll all be well-read and used. So thank you. Any other comments on the reports this evening? No? All right, we move on to council comments. I uh, you know, I read through four proclamations this evening. I mean, some of you may have wanted to speak additionally to some of those. I I want to thank all the everyone for the hard work they did to to put those proclamations together. We don't often do four proclamations in one evening these days, but these were all uh important issues and then timely issues created the need for additional. So uh, thank you for listening to all of those. And council comments, opportunity, of course, for anyone on council to to speak up. I have a few things, but you know. Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just want to go back and and speak your proclamation C zero four. And I just want to thank very much our Mayor Protem Brooks, um, who came to me with this idea that we um in this moment of all that's going on in our country around violence and hateful acts against um Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders that we we think about how how best we can respond. And I know in that moment, my initial reaction was I really wanted to find a way to partner with Global Troy. Having just met them a few weeks ago, and that was a very question that I know myself and many of us, we brought to them is wanting to hear, um, what are they hearing in their community, knowing that we do have a number of members um of Asian American background on Global Troy and really wanting anything that we do to be in partnership with them and really come from the the ground up. We realized, though, that we wouldn't have time to quickly get that together, um, and we knew that we wanted to respond in this moment in solidarity um with our Asian American and Pacific Islander residents in our city, knowing that we have a large population in our city. And also recognizing that yesterday was the International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination, which is a UN commemoration. It has its roots in the fight against apartheid in South Africa. And so it was just very timely that we we found a way to to um to come together and and to do this. So I thank you for all your support. And I think most importantly, I think to our Asian American and Pacific Islander community and communities in our city, I wanted to say I stand with you. I condemn all acts of racism, of hateful acts and um hateful speech of any sort, and we condemn that against anyone in our city of all races and all backgrounds in our city. And just um the words that I have been holding on to are words of um of Martin Luther King Jr., which are my favorite um favorite quote of of his, and that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We are caught in an escapable network of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga. Thank you to both you and Mayor Protem Brooks for working on that for for the city and for our city's official proclamation. It's important, so thank you. Additional council comments? Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as an engineering nerd, I was really excited to see the Big Beaver Diverging Diamond Interchange was open today. I got to drive through it. Um, it's been a long time coming. Um, residents, I suggest you try it out. You kind of see how the eastbound and westbound lanes kind of reverse themselves, and then the cars come in and off on the highway on that reversed way, and it makes traffic flow smoother. So it's it's interesting to see how it works, and it'll take a little getting used to, but it was a long-time project over the last year and a half and many years of planning. And I thank M Dot and everyone else in the city who helped organize that, helped organized around that. And it's exciting to finally see it open up. 14 Mile is gonna open up, I think, in a few more months, right, Mark, or something like that. And they're also gonna have a diverging diamond. And also, I'm um the city council's delegate for the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, and I'm I'm proud to say last week I was elected to SMCOG's uh Transportation Coordinating Council, which is a uh standing committee they have tasked with uh developing a regional transit plan. So I'm hoping to advocate for Troy and Troy businesses on that board to help bring more transit options throughout the region. Uh, Troy ha- besides the Troy, Troy has the most jobs of any municipality in the entire seven counties Southeast Michigan region. And so and 120,000 people every day, 100 to 120,000 people every day come into the city of Troy and leave, at least before the pandemic, probably not as much now. But with so many people coming in and out, transit is critical to our city, so I'm hoping to advocate to uh for a regional transit plan to help our business and help bring more business to our city.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. Congratulations on that. That's good. It's always good for Troy to have a seat at the table, so we know you'll speak up. Any other goffo comments? Uh, Mayor Protem Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I had I had a few comments. Um, first of all, congratulations to Councilmember Hamilton. That's wonderful news. Um, but also, I wanted to comment on some of the proclamations uh that we uh discussed today, including C four. I first uh wanted to thank Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga for uh writing this proclamation. And um I know that we had put forth the proclamation on Ju- on June 1st of 2020 denouncing hatred and bigotry. However, you know, given some of the recent events that have taken place and just looking at some of the statistics, I think that it was important that we acknowledge that our Asian community has Asian communities are being targeted at this time. And um in Troy, it's important that we, as a city, uh reaffirm our commitment to support um our Asian American communities. And um and everyone feel deserves to feel safe in their home, and uh we want all of our residents to feel that they can report any incidents that come about to our uh Troy Police Department and that our city, including law enforcement, will be here to assist and protect them. Um, and the other proclamation I just wanted to comment on was C three. Obviously, being in medicine, um, I think that it is very wonderful that we are recognizing Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month. Um, obviously, um, you know, well, Black Americans are more likely, 20% more likely to develop colorectal cancer and 40% more likely to die from it. And obviously, one of the most prominent figures recently is Chadwick Boseman, AKA Black Panther. Um, and so, you know, they are finding that younger and younger people are becoming sick with um colorectal cancer. So it is important to begin your screening at the age of 50, and for those with a family history, um, or those who are considered high-risk, to begin screening at age 40. Um, so that is something that is very, very important. So that's kind of my PSA for today. Um, and then finally, I just wanted to say that my family and I participated in the Maple Syrup Tour at the Stage Nature Center, and we really, really enjoyed it. Um, and so we thank you to all the volunteers um at the Stage Nature Center for putting together such a great family event every year. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Brooks. Appreciate all of that. Um, Councilmember Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. I I too wanted to comment on C zero four. First, I'd like to thank Mayor Protem uh Brooks and Councilwoman Chamberlain Kranga for collaborating on that proclamation. I think it is critical that that we assure our community, of all ethnic groups, especially our Asian American and Pacific Islanders, that we stand with them and that we embrace the diversity of this community. We can't assume that just because we proclaim proclaimed it once, that people will um and they think it's a one and done. We've done it once, but now we need to really double down and make sure people understand it's not just words to us. We're we we're actively trying to embrace diversity, equity, and inclu- inclusivity in how we run the city, how we in interact with our citizens. And I believe all of council, or at least most of council, uh, met with our um representative from Gov HR who interviewed us on DEI and what it meant to us and what our chief concerns are. So I want our city to understand we are doing more than just proclamations. We are trying to embrace the challenge that we're facing today where there is so much hatred that's being expressed. We're trying to make sure that every resident feels safe and secure in their homes and outside their homes, and that we can all lead lives of dignity. We're not perfect as a council, but we're working to be a better city and embrace a better community. And I know we can do it. We've risen to the challenge before. We can do it again.
Thank you, Councilmember Abraham. Uh, Councilmember Erickson Goll?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I echo the comments of my council members, and I'm very glad that we not only issued this proclamation against hate this evening, but also uh as Councilmember Abraham mentioned, that we are actively working to increase diversity, equity, and inclusion in Troy. I also wanted to uh comment that um with uh nicer weather, construction season is in full bloom, and we've had some comments and concerns expressed by some residents about work on various construction sites. Um, what I wanted to emphasize is that any resident who is having trouble with a construction site that's causing uh any kind of um dust or trash or other nuisance to your home, to please call our code enforcement department. This is an issue that they deal with regularly, and they're happy to check on that and um and do their best to make sure that uh people who are building in Troy are good corporate citizens and doing what they need to do to make sure that uh they are not destroying the quality of life for other residents while they're building new homes for new residents. And um the code enforcement is on our website. Uh, if you go to the departments in code enforcement, and then you will see on the left-hand side of the screen, there is both a section on common codes enforced, in case you have any questions about what our city uh looks at in enforcing codes, but also, more importantly, report a violation. And it'll give you the information you need to do that. So I I I strongly encourage is um what happens sometimes is we don't know. Uh, council doesn't know, the staff doesn't know, but if you reach out and let code enforcement know when you're having a problem, then we can address it. So uh, but, you know, feel free always to contact me or other members of council. We're always here to hear what you have to say about how to improve our standard of living here in Troy and and keep it great. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Erickson Goll. And I can't not say it, but happy birthday. I'm surprised, I'm surprised I'm the first one to say it on camera to you of all people, but I'll give it. Thanks, everybody, for letting me have that one, but happy birthday, Ed. It's a wonderful way to say it.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
I only have like three or four more hours of comments, and then you can go off and have the rest of your birthday celebration.
Where where's my virtual cake?
Yeah. I just hate it. Uh, the Councilmember Hoderic, did you have any comments this evening? You're soaking it all in back there. I got you. Well, I appreciate that. And, you know, we uh I have a couple of things tonight. I I just, you know, I read those proclamations, and I I just as a reminder to everybody in the city of Troy, our our city council, we we don't issue mayoral proclamations, we issue Troy City Council proclamations. We speak in one voice, and um we have limited means to do that. The only way we can do it is by affirmative vote of council, and we were able to do that tonight. So I do, again, thank Mayor Protem Brooks and Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga for working with city staff to get that proclamation um regarding Asian hate and talking about what the city of Troy really is about. Um, and to my other council members who who spoke very eloquently about, you know, it's one thing to um it's one thing to do it, you know, we had the proclamation back in June, you know, that I don't believe and I hate, you know, check-the-box type government, and I don't want anyone to think that we, okay, well, we did that back in June because that was, you know, I that was what was going on in the country then, and so we've covered, we can, we're done, and that that's not who we are. This is a very um, like everyone's talked about it, it's a continuing growth effort for us on council, for our city as a whole, for pretty much everyone. And and, you know, we're doing what we can with our limited availability, limited needs to do that as this body. Um, certainly, many of us uh post our opinions and feelings and statements on our own social media. Um, but again, those are our own individuals. So I when the the city council comes together and supports it and puts out a proclamation and supports it, it's it's a powerful um thing for our formal government to do. So I just want to make sure that that the the gravity of that situation doesn't get lost. You don't see proclamation, you oh, you saw four proclamations this evening, but you don't see a lot of proclamations in response to to events and things you hear around the country that are happening, because that's not how we work as government. So again, when we do take the time to have our some of our council members work together to get a proclamation out, um, it it means that much more, in my opinion, if that makes any sense. So again, thank you, Teresa and Rebecca and city staff for working to get that together. Um, it's it was an important statement for us to make, and I look forward to our next step of working with Gov HR and our next step in our growth in the city and our city government as to how we deal with these issues. Um, I I know I know that we're in a good position to to handle that and work together, and I that makes me very, very happy. You know, C three, uh, the colorectal awareness is um I I so important, and I I'm by Dr. Brooks, you spoke a little bit about it tonight from your perspective. Everyone always hears an early detection is key. Um, it's about that really does mean something, and especially it seems like with colorectal cancer. I don't know why it seems so important, but I I know a few people who've really had um difficulty with colorectal cancer because they waited too long. And obviously, I'm just gonna say it as a male, there's there's two of us on council's males, there is a stigma in, I think, in a colonoscopy when you're a male in this country, and I wish that wasn't the case, it shouldn't be. Um, so please don't let that prohibit you from getting the necessary testing that you need to potentially save your life. And remember, it's not just about saving your life, but it's all your family and everyone that affects. Um, I had silly, I inappropriately joked that, you know, when Katie Couric gave an A, her col- did her colonoscopy on the Today Show, maybe that's something I should do as the mayor here. I won't be doing that, but I I will say, please, please don't be, don't let the that be a stigma for you. It's it's very, very important, and everyone I know who has struggled with it has been a male. So I am, I see Councilmember Hoderic, I think I know where you're gonna go with this. Alan, if you want to go ahead and I'll toss it over to you, and then I I've got a few things to come back.
Um, just a little bit more of a comment um about that, and we hear the discussions about the importance of that early screening. I think uh Jamie Samuelson's wife, Christie McDonald, they're a Troy family, um, well-recognized family in the city. Um, she spoke um on Fox Two, they they she appeared to speak and explain what happened. And in his case, I believe he was 48, he suddenly didn't feel good at Christmas time, and um they thought it was food poisoning. And I think I'm re- retelling the story accurately, but um went to the doctor and the doctor ordered that, and in January, um, he went for the colonoscopy and the results were not good. And that's, he's a young man. Um, and his wish was for folks to really hear and understand, he he really wished he had had screening earlier, and um those numbers are going up, as Dr. Dr. Brooks mentioned. And that was the word that Christie McDonald was trying to get out. You know, this is one of our Troy families trying to speak out to the whole metro area, and for sure, I wanted to make sure um her fellow neighbors here know that she was heard um because that was one of his wishes. So um his story could have been different, and she's already heard from people that did hear his story, went earlier than they would have, and it turned out to be a good thing. So um I really appreciate that uh we're taking the time to really acknowledge that for very active, present, um, Jamie was always very present in this community and enjoyed everything about it. And um it feels good to honor his wish. And it feels good to honor his wish to make sure that that was that was known. So anyway, I appreciate that you're speaking to it. And yes, you men, if there's a stigma to that, I didn't realize it. Get over it. Get in there and get it taken care of. We need you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoderick, and thank you for taking the taking the lead with that proclamation and giving it to city staff. And it's it's important. To completely change gears, actually, to go back for one second. Mark, can you, I I'm sure some of us will personally, but will you make sure that officially the Global Troy Advisory Committee gets a copy of the proclamation C four that we approved tonight? Have Sarah send that out to them in the morning, maybe just so they're all if Rebecca hasn't already done it, but I say that with, I know you, we close relationships and love that. But I think it would be important for them to see the official final proclamation as well. To shift gears now, and I'm reminded this a little bit, and there's been some conversations just casually I've heard, you know, as the weather gets nicer, we are still a ways away from Memorial Day. But as we look towards reopening the Aquatic Center this year, I wanted to know if maybe we could, if I could seek consensus from council to have city management provide us with a few different thoughts or options as to how to successfully and properly reopen the Aquatic Center based on a couple of different things that I'm thinking about. First, we don't obviously know what restrictions there may or may not be in effect at the end of May as far as capacity. But my hunch is there will likely be some capacity restrictions. And one of the things that I I'd like to see explored if possible is as we come back into the season, is it the right thing to do to to restrict admission this year or this season to Troy residents? Seeing that there likely could be capacity restrictions, especially as we've put in several tax dollars over this fast year for that aquatic center. I is that I certainly not asking for consensus to make that decision, but I'd love to see some reporting or some information on that if possible. So that's something I can get consensus for. It's good. So City Manager Miller, I I know we've got budget conversations, conversations, makes it sound very casual, but budget discussions coming up next month, perhaps something could be included about that specific issue and any other. You know, the Aquatic Center, obviously, just, we don't know what it's going to look like, but I'm assuming your budget has will address that, or it has to address that, but we could have some information on that would be appreciated. I think he said, okay. All right. I think that is it for me for council comments. And any other comments this evening? All right. Well, I with that, then I'll again thank our healthcare heroes and first and frontline responders. We know you're still out there working hard in unbelievable circumstances at times to keep us safe and protected. We appreciate you so much. All of our teachers, all of our grocery store employees, everybody who's come into contact with thousands and thousands of people that and we know many of you are getting vaccinated, you're working hard. We appreciate that. I kid you not, I'm going to leave here and drive down I 75 and take the DDI Big Beaver exit, see how that's like. And also check out our city Hall with a blue. So that's what I'm on my way to do. I appreciate everybody. We'll be adjourned for the night. Good night, everybody. Thank you.